Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I believe it's about six o'clock. We are ready to get into the business of the city, if you will. So the city council meeting for the city of Granbury, it's our regular meeting agenda. It is 6:00 PM Tuesday, March 7, 2023. We are at Granbury City Hall, 116 Waste Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas. We are now convened and called into order. I'd like to have Mr. Pastor Earl Ergenbrock come up and give us, Lowell Ergenbrock, come and give us the invocation. I'd like to note that in addition to many of his pastoral duties, he is also the chaplain for our volunteer fire department, and we pray for all of them this week for sure. Thank you, sir. Rice?
Everyone, please stand. Father, we just thank you for all that you do, Lord, for who you are. Lord, I thank you for all of our volunteers this week who were able to do a great deed for the city in saving one of our longstanding structures, Lord. Lord, I ask you to continue to keep them safe, Lord. Raise them up, build them up, Lord. Lord, I thank you for this council and our mayor. I ask you to continue to give them guidance and vision, Lord, that they seek you in all they do, Lord. Lord, continue to guide this city. Lord, they are called by your word to be ministers of good to the people, and all authority flows through you, Lord. We ask that we remember that daily, Lord. We ask you to continue to pour out your favor on this community, Lord. Show yourself in a mighty way, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you'll join the council in the pledge of allegiance to the American and the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay. Number four on our agenda is proclamation and presentation, and I think we're going to do the proclamations for the city council, city manager, and others to issue encouraging statements to recognize city staff. Mr. Ross? Yes, let's do that first.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of tagging on the pastor's comments, we also want to thank the volunteers of the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department and also the other Hood County volunteer fire departments that responded and assisted our own volunteers with the fire at the Nut House Hotel. And of course, that was in the early morning last Thursday. We cannot thank them enough for their dedication and efforts fighting that fire and preserving that structure itself. I also want to thank our police, building services, internal services, and public works departments who also provided response and follow-up efforts to secure the site and make sure it was, the site was safe and the people that come and go all around it. You all are to be commended. Thank you.
Yeah, there are so many, we can't miss anyone, so everyone's included. That was a great effort. I'll just say that I happen to be out of town in San Antonio at a meeting, and I get this call at four o'clock in the morning from Trish. She informed me of the tragedy that was happening, and I started driving this way, and let me tell you, it's a long four hours till you pull up to the square here and see that those walls are still standing, and they're still, then they're going to stand. We're not going to have a funeral with that facility. It's too beautiful. It's going to be part of Granbury for a long, long time. Other comments? Anyone?
I did just realize, Mayor, that I forgot our communications department, who also was very much on top of it in broadcasting all of the information. Thank y'all as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vale?
Just one note, I mean, you know, that fire, from my understanding, started at 1:00 AM, so Granbury's kind of like New York. I mean, the city never sleeps. Our employees don't sleep. The fire and police don't sleep either, so if there's a situation, an emergency, you know, the team here and the community is ready to respond, no matter what time of day it is, so just wanted to point that out.
Okay, now we are going to have a proclamation, and I'm going to come down to the front. This is a proclamation for National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and we'll have two groups come up at different times. The DAR, they will come first, and then Mission Granbury will follow, and then we will have a, or not Mission Granbury, my apologies, the Memorial Lane group will come. And then we will have a couple of photographs. So if the DAR group would join me up front? I'm going to let you guys go ahead and hold this at this point in time, okay? I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. It is. Whereas the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017 designated March 29 of each year as National Vietnam War Veterans Day to honor all veterans who served on active duty in the U.S. Armed Forces from November 1, 1955, to May 17, 1975, it was chosen to be observed in perpetuity. And whereas more than nine million Americans served and nearly three million served in Vietnam, of those, more than 58,000 Americans were killed and thousands more were wounded or determined to be missing. And whereas all those who served their country deserve the heartfelt acknowledgement and profound gratitude of their countrymen, and whereas the National Vietnam War Veterans Day not only highlights the service of the armed forces during the Vietnam War, but also the contributions of federal agencies and governmental and non-governmental organizations that served with or in support of the armed forces and pays tribute to the contributions made on the home front by the people of the United States during the Vietnam War. Now therefore, I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the city of Granbury, do hereby proclaim March 29, 2023, as National Vietnam War Veterans Day in Granbury and encourage the community to thank, honor, respect, and support each of our Vietnam veterans and their families. So we have this proclamation here. It's going to be the same proclamation. If we could have the Memorial Lane group come up, then we'll separate for photos. I might add that Memorial Lane, at Memorial Lane, on March 29, 10:00 to 10:30, there will be a celebration and appreciation and honoring of veterans who would like to come at that point in time. There are songs, or there's patriotic music. I think there's even some gifts for veterans that we'll show. But this is, it hits me in the heart, so I hope each and every one of you do come to this, to the service on the 10th. I think we're going to separate into a couple of groups, get a couple of pictures here.
Thank you, Joe.
Do you have any?
for non-public hearing agenda items. We do have a couple of non-public hearing items tonight. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes. Carla, I don't believe I have anyone for this, okay? So I'm going to save a little time and not read through that. Number six is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Council, you've had a chance to look these over. Anybody have any questions, comments? Want to pull anything off?
Mayor, I just got one comment, and it's on the emergency response equipment grant. It's just, we're fortunate enough that we are able to purchase these things and then get reimbursed for these things and not spend any of the taxpayers' money on equipment for these services. And that's the only comment I have. Thank you.
I'm glad that you mentioned that, because the gentleman who writes these grants is in the back, back here for us, and this is not an easy task. You write the grant, then you get it evaluated, you get it graded, and then you compete against everybody. And as you can see, we have a couple here that have been written, accepted, and as soon as we show proof of purchase, then we'll be able to access those monies. So we appreciate not only for all of the work you guys do protecting the public, but helping the city save a dollar or two where it matters. Thank you. So I hear... Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley moves to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That is past six and oh. Okay. We will move to the deliberation agenda. Seven point one, presentation of the city of Granbury's annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Chris Pruitt, audit partner with Patillo Brown &amp; Hill, for this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to serve as your auditors this year. I'd also like to thank the finance department for all the help that they provided during the course of the audit. This was the first year that our firm did do your audit, and everything went great. They were very helpful, very knowledgeable, and made our job very easy. So with that being said, I would like to go over two documents with you. The first one is an annual comprehensive financial report. The other is a letter to those charged with governance. I'd like to briefly just walk you through each document, answer any questions that you may have over either one or the audit process in general. So with the annual comprehensive financial report, it's divided into four different sections, an introductory section, a financial section, a statistical section, and a single audit section. In regards to the introductory section, the only thing I'd really like to touch on is on page Roman numeral 11. Looks like this, if you can see. This is a copy of last year's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is an award given out by the government officers, Government Finance Officers Association. It's an award that the city has received for a number of years. I just wanted to let you know that this year's report meets all of the criteria to receive this award again. My understanding is that you were submitting this report to receive this award, and you should be receiving that award this fall, is usually when they give them out. The financial section begins on page one with our independent auditor's report. I'm not going over every 131 pages, by the way, unless you want me to, I can. Okay. The independent auditor's report states that the financial statements themselves are the responsibility of the management of the city and that our responsibility as your auditor is to express an opinion on those financials. It's right off the bat. If the first two paragraphs goes over the opinion, you receive what we call an unmodified opinion. In layman's terms, it's returned to as a clean opinion, and what that means is that a third party can rely upon the financial statements as being materially accurate. So it's the highest opinion that we can give, and so that's good. That document is followed by the management discussion and analysis on page four. Now, this is the responsibility of the finance director to put together. We do compare all the numbers and make sure that they agree. This particular one is about 12 pages long, and it's a great place to go, read about 12 pages and gain an understanding of what occurred during the year without actually having to go in and analyze these financial statements themselves. I always refer to them as the Cliff Notes of the financials. It's, like I said, it's a great place to go, read a few pages. It's a little easier to understand. In regards to the financial statements themselves, I'm going to skip ahead to page 21. This is what we call your fund financials, and the question that I seem to always get is, you know, how are we doing? And a good indicator of that is your unrestricted fund balance in your general fund. That can be found on page 23. It's the third number from the bottom you received, or that number is standing right now at about $14.8 million. So in relation to your yearly expenditures, that's considered very healthy. So the general fund is in great shape. You will also find your debt service and capital projects funds on this schedule as well. These are what we call major funds. All of your other smaller funds are rolled together and presented in one column on that other governmental fund. Your debt service equity is going to obviously change as you make payments and capital projects. It just kind of depends on what's going on. Both of those equities are in good shape as well. The proprietary funds, is what we call them, you're familiar probably with utility fund, airport fund, those can be found on page 29. Again, your unrestricted equity is very important. In the utility fund, it's $11.7 million. In the airport fund, it's 2.4. Both of those numbers are very healthy compared to the yearly expenditures that are incurred in those funds. So I would say, in my professional opinion, that you're in very good shape in those funds. The notes to the financials begin on page 36, like the management discussion and analysis. They're in a written format, and they're just designed to provide additional information. On the financials, you'll find notes on how you record things, what basis of accounting you're using, a lot of detailed notes on balance sheet items such as cash, grants receivable, capital assets, debt, and then our favorite, which are those liability, pension liability notes, which go on for pages. Those are in there as well. Right after that is your general fund budget to actual schedule, and that begins on page 64. This is the second thing that people ask me, how are we doing in regards to our budget? I would like to point out that you received $3.5 million more than you anticipated in the general fund, which is good, mainly driven by $3.1 million of sales tax revenue. In regards to your expenditures, you spent, I believe, just over $1 million less than you budgeted for. So you're in the black. Together, the general fund is better off than anticipated by $4.3 million. So that's good. Shows conservative budgeting. I'm going to skip ahead to the third part of the report, which is the statistical section. You will note that this, the schedules say that they're unaudited, and that's because we're presenting 10-year trend data throughout these statistical reports. You will find reports on financial information, demographic information, debt capacity information, some operating information. But I really, next to the M D N A, this is the section that I really like because it provides so much information for you over a 10-year period that you can use to make decisions and see where you're going and seeing what trends are formed. Again, I did want to explain the unaudited. You'll see that on every schedule, but they have been looked at by us. They have been compared to this year's numbers, and then last year's numbers obviously were just brought forward. We didn't, we can't express an opinion on it because we didn't do all of those years of the audit, so. Okay, the final section is your single audit section or compliance section. The city received more than $750,000 worth of federal funding this year, so you have to call, have what we call a single audit, and that's a process by which we go in and we identify your large grants or high-risk grants, and then we do additional test work on those above and beyond what we normally would do in the course of an audit. There are two letters that we have to issue in conjunction with that. The first one is on page 125. This is called a gas report or a yellow book report. What it is, is we're talking about your internal control over financial reporting and your compliance with various laws, grants, and regulations as it relates to the entire city as a whole. So what does that mean? These are the things that you normally would think of when you think of an audit. We're looking at your passwords for your computers and how those are rotated. We're looking at the controls that you have over your capital assets, cash, excuse me. I'm happy to say that nothing came up during the audit that we feel could cause a material misstatement of those financial statements, so you got a clean report. The second report is very similar to it. It's on page 127, and it's similar in that we're talking about compliance and your internal control structure, but this time it's as it relates to the grants that we did the additional, or grant that we did the additional test work on. In case you're wondering, the grant that we did do the additional work on was your capitalization grants for clean water and drinking water state revolving funds. It's a very large grant. On page 130, you will find a listing of those federal grants, and the city did receive $12.5 million of federal funding for the year. I'm happy to say nothing came up during the single audit that would lead us to believe that you were out of compliance with that grant. So again, you got a clean report on that. Okay, the second document that I'd like to discuss is this letter. This is called a SAS 114 report. It's a letter to those charged with governance, which is yourselves. There are certain things that I have to convey to you as your auditor. I have chosen to put them into a written format rather than verbally going over all of these things. It discusses our responsibility in relation to the audit, the scope and timing of the audit, compliance and ethics regarding independence. There is one thing on page two that I would like to draw to your attention because it's a change. You will find on the second page of the letter, significant risks identified. There are two risks identified, management override of controls and lease accounting. These are items that we, as your auditor, have to, we now have to tell you some high-risk areas that we want to keep on our brain while we do your audit, before the audit starts. These are not items that came up during the audit. These are things that we wanted to remind ourselves before the audit. Management override of controls is always a risk at every entity, regardless of it's a city, county, a corporation. It's just an automatic risk. As for the lease accounting, there was a big change in lease accounting standards this year, and that also really is a high risk for all of our clients because it was such a dramatic change in how leases are reported. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on that. These weren't items that came up during the audit. These were things that we put on our mind before the audit. Other things in the letter, or whether or not you, whether we had disagreements with management, which I'm happy to say we did not, whether you consulted with other auditors, and then we'd like to keep you up to speed on changes in accounting standards, so there's a brief synopsis of some upcoming standards. It's a big report, 131 pages, I believe. I went over it fairly quickly. At this time, I'd like to field any questions that you might have over either document or the audit process.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Wadley.
The only question I really had was on the significant risks identified, so thank you for clarifying.
Oh, sure. It's, believe me, I've given this every time. I've just started telling people in advance because it looks, it's worded very poorly, I think.
When I saw the words, I was waiting for the hammer to drop, and since there's no hammer, it makes me happy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments? This is your first year, correct?
First year of auditing Granbury, yes.
Right. So you got to look at a lot of new things, dig deep into our operations.
Yes.
This, as I look at this, this is the history over the last 10 years. This is how we done, how we did, and then our budget process, our budget book that we presented, this is what we're planning on doing. And I think you go back to this and the plan, look at the plan, look at the actual, look at the plan, look at the actual, like you say, it's a million dollars off, and as we discussed earlier in the year, we had at one time, what, 35 openings that we wish we had had filled, and we would have encumbered that million dollars at that point in time. The $3 million that came in on sales tax, thanks to everybody, because, you know, the city of Granbury bringing in people is what drives that sales tax.
Certainly.
Come, anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vale?
I just want to highlight a comment that you had made, that this was the first year that you had done the audit for the city of Granbury.
Yes.
And I know during our discussions as a council, you know, we made a conscious decision that the prior auditing company that we're using, that we felt, you know, it'd be a good idea to have a fresh set of eyes, you know, looking at all of our, looking at all our accounting and our controls. So I think that was just good, you know, prudent decision by the council and good stewardship of the finances of the city. So we thank you for all your diligent work here. Thank you.
Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Others? Okay. All right. Counsel? This is the presentation. There is no action to be taken at this point in time, correct? Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming in. Appreciate it. Okay. Okay. Carla, going to bring it up? We have a, there will be a public hearing on this after I read through this, and I do believe that we have some people that, maybe not on this item, but do want to speak on various public hearing items. You'll get a chance when we call that particular item up. If you need to sign up, now would be the time to do that. Okay. Seven point two, it is a public hearing, and we'll open that in a minute. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-23 approving the request of Vicki Nivens for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental STR residential unhoseded in a residential 8400 R 8.4 zoning district. The property's address is 438 East Bridge Street. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Director of Community Development, Kira Wawee, for these next four items.[1750.83]
We have a, there will be a public hearing on this after I read through this, that, and I do believe that we have some people that, maybe not on this item, but do want to speak on various public hearing items. You'll get a chance when we call that particular item up. If you need to sign up, now would be the time to do that. Okay. 7.2, it is a public hearing, and we'll open that in a minute. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-23 approving the request of Vicky Evans for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental STR residential unhoseded in a residential 8400 R 8.4 zoning district. The property's address is 438 East Bridge Street. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Director of Community Development, Kira Wawie, for these next four items.
Okay, thank you. So, on the screen for you, you have a map showing the subject site outlined in blue, and the site is 0.22 acres in size. The request, as stated, was for a two-bedroom, short-term rental unhoseded. The surrounding properties are residential in nature and also include other short-term rental unhoseded uses. To the south is light commercial zoning, and there is a retail store immediately south. Moving on to our zoning map, the yellow there shows the indication of single-family residential R 8.4, same as the subject site, and as I just mentioned, the zoning to the south is light commercial. This is a context map that we use to show the surrounding area, and outlined in pink are the nearby short-term rental uses. So, there are several along Bridge Street. This is a street view of the residence proposed for the use. And the site plan shows the existing residential building with three parking spaces along Bridge Street or accessed from Bridge Street. The applicant is proposing to install shrubs along the west side of the parking to screen the headlight sweep that's required by ordinance, so they'll be complying with that. This was the floor plan showing the bedrooms and other features of the building, and the evacuation plan. The evacuation plan is intended to be included with the permit. It's not part of the SUP review. Shouldn't have that in there. The SUP criteria, the specific use permit has criterias for decision-making, and the questions to pose are, is the use harmonious and compatible with surrounding area? The surrounding area, as stated, includes a retail to the south, short-term rentals, and single-family residential along Bridge Street. Generally, the use is compatible with those types of uses and may be approved with adherence to the adopted supplemental standards if determined harmonious and adaptable to uses of the abutting properties. The question, are the activities requested by the applicant normally associated with the requested use? The applicant, application, excuse me, does present that way. Is the nature of the use reasonable? The site is in the historic preservation overlay area, and their policies of the city designate that as an appropriate area for the use. They would need to comply with special standards and city code requirements. And are there other measures to secure and protect the public health, safety, and welfare? The parking spaces will be available and will comply. That should be saying three parking spaces. I apologize. Slide's a little off. The criteria that's in the ordinance are showing, it's a little bit small font there, but I want to assure you that based on the information presented in the application, all of the criteria will be, will be adhered to based on our knowledge. So, this goes on for a couple of pages, and it also indicates compliance with permitting required, certificate of occupancy, and other requirements of city code. On February 3rd, the staff mailed out 23 public notices to property owners within 200 feet of the, and on the municipal tax roll, and within 200 feet of the subject property. We also published notice in the Hood County News as required. We received eight letters in favor and two letters in opposition to the request. I noticed today the staff report has a little bit of a mix-up on the letters, and I did a recount and found this, so we'll have to work a little harder to get those right. In the planning commission, they recommended approval of the request on February 13th of this year with six conditions, a one-year term, subject to the site plan and the floor plan, not more than, that should be, I don't know why I've got this mixed up. I believe we were saying three bedrooms. Let me consult this. There's something obviously wrong here. Yes, I'm sorry. It should be two bedrooms. Thank you for your patience. I apologize. With two bedrooms, and except as provided in the conditions, they'll be subject to supplemental standards and city codes, and any violations of the terms of the SUP may be a violation. And staff recommends approval with the same conditions as the P and Z. The voting options are here on your screen, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public meeting at this time. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on this? I have no one who's signed up specifically. Okay. Comments, questions from counsel?
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Reiner?
Quick question, and I tend to ask this when I see that there are people opposed to short-term rental. Have we, and I know the answer previously was no, but have we had any complaints to date about short-term rentals? Michael, you might know this, or I don't know if Chief Calvano's in the room. Do we know the answer to that?
I have not heard of any specifically. Kira, have?
No, we have not heard any. We have heard at the P and Z, someone came in and made comments regarding opposition to the use, but we haven't heard any complaints through the police department or code enforcement.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Other comments, counsel? Nope. I have, you know, personal feelings about it's a single-family area. It is in our historical area. I would love to see children in tricycles down there, but I think we also have an obligation as a city to provide some continuity and predictability. But if there are no other comments, I'll be closing the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on 7.2? Mr. Corrigan?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I hear a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Ms. Reiner, second. So, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved 6-0. Now go to 7.3. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-24 approving the request of Ms. Vicky Evans for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental residential unhoseded in a residential 8400 R 8.4 zoning district. The property is addressed as 606 East Bridge Street.
Kira, please.
Thank you. Yes, this is the, the short-term rental here, request for three bedrooms. So, getting my feet on the ground, I guess. This site is outlined in teal on your map. The area is residential. To the north and to the south of Bridge Street, it includes some residences as well as the short-term rental properties, and then to the south of that is commercial development along Pearl. So, the request again is for a three-bedroom, short-term rental unhoseded use in a three-bedroom single-family dwelling. And this shows the zoning map is indicated in the previous presentation. The yellow is the single-family residential 8.4 district, and the purple is a PD district, specifically to the north. That's a residential PD district, and the pinkish color to the south is light commercial zoning. This is a context map that shows the surrounding short-term rentals outlined in pink, just to give you an idea of those locations. This is the street view of the property. Shows the two-story bed, building. Two bedrooms are on the first floor and one bedroom on the second. This is the site plan. There's adequate parking on the property, and the floor plans. And the SUP criteria is presented in the previous item. The summary of this is that the questions that are required can be answered in a satisfactory way to support the application, and these criteria specific to the operations and site and performance also can be answered in a satisfactory way to support these regulations. And that would incorporate the staff report into this presentation then, since I'm doing a little bit of a high-level presentation. Again, these are regulations that can be satisfied by the application content and intent. Public notice was mailed on February 3rd to 23 property owners and also published in the Hood County News. We received eight letters in favor and one letter in opposition to the request. The P and Z on February 13th recommended approval of this request with a 5-0 unanimous vote with these conditions, a term of one year, subject to a site plan and floor plan, no more than two bedrooms, three bedrooms, sorry, and the last three conditions are standard, subject to the supplemental standards in the zoning ordinance, the permits, requirements, periodic inspections, and a violation statement. The staff is recommending approval subject to those same conditions, and these are your voting options. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I do have one individual, Mr. Peter Garland. Would you like to come and speak? If you would, give us your address, please, full name.
My name is Peter Garland. I live at 511 East Bridge Street, right across the street from this B and B. I would like to read you a letter that I received from Mike and Helen Pemberton. The letter is dated February 25th, 1997. Dear neighbor, we have purchased a house located at 606 East Bridge Street. It is our intention to spend about $50,000 rebuilding it, adding a second floor, and giving it a modest Victorian facade. It will be our residence, and we would like to host tourists on weekends only in our spare bedrooms. The kind of people who stay in bed and breakfast are high-quality people who have come to Granbury to enjoy a quiet country getaway. The improvements to the house at 606 East Bridge Street will increase the value of your property. In the event our request for zoning is denied, we will simply paint the existing building and rent it out to a family who can afford very little. Sincerely, Mike and Helen Pemberton. And now we got nine bed and breakfasts from Stockton Street down to the end of East Bridge Street. When we had one, was only going to rent it on weekends. We have two more lots that are owned by the same applicant that are coming up for some kind of action within the next year or so. We also have four houses that were demolished to make room for the bed and breakfast that the applicant owns. Yes, it was a tragedy to lose the nutshell, the nut house hotel, but it's also a tragedy to lose four houses in a historic district just because they were in bad shape. They couldn't have been fixed up or anything like that, according to some experts. I just want to know, are you going to make the entire area from Stockton Street to the end of Bridge Street short-term rentals? There are no kids playing, Mayor. There are no baby buggies being pushed, and now we're getting sidewalks down that street. So, I just find it incomprehensible that you can take an entire neighborhood in a historic district and make it short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. Are there others that would like to speak? City council? Questions of staff? Mr. Garland? Hear no questions? Do I hear a motion on item 7.2? Let me close the public hearing. So, do I hear a motion on item 7.3? Consider adopting ordinance number 23.24 approving the request of Vicky Evans for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental residential unhoseded in a residential 8400 R 8.4 zoning district. Property is addressed as 606 East Bridge Street. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vale makes a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved 6-0. Okay. Number 7.4. Consider adopting ordinance number 23.25 approving a request of Juland Properties to amend the future land use map contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan on Block 80 of the Barton addition from low-density residential to retail office. This property is addressed as 616 Thorpe Spring Road. Mr. Ross?
Take it away, Kira. You want to do both of these or together?
Let's do both at the same time, please.
If that's okay, Mayor.
Yes, you want to explain why?
They are both for the same address and one, go ahead.
They're both at the same address, and they are related in their content. So, if we could have the zoning request also.
So, you're bringing forward 7.4 and 7.5, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Okay, sure. Okay. So, the site is outlined in blue on your map in front of you. The site is about one, about 0.718 acres, zoned currently R 8.4 single-family residential district, and also has an overlay with the historic preservation overlay. The house is designated a local historic landmark and is known as the Cogdell House. The request is as stated both to amend the future land use plan from low-density residential to retail office, and to change the zoning from residential 8.4 to light commercial. So, on this map, you can see the surrounding uses on the aerial. Generally, the neighborhood block there is, is single-family residential from one end to the other. Across the street, there is a vacant lot as well as single-family residential, and to the south is a public facility. It used to be used for the police gym, but as they've moved into their new facility, it's, the new facility has its own gym. So, this is a street view of that historic home. As you can see, it's a residential structure, and this is the street view of the properties nearby, showing the subject property to the lower right, the street to the upper right, and that vacant lot across the street. The future land use map is the first part of the request. The existing future land use map is shown on the screen. The yellow is the low-density residential and represents a compatible zoning for that existing zoning of R 8.4, which is on the property, and that the surrounding area. The proposed is office retail. As you can see on the future land use map excerpt there, there's no office retail anywhere nearby. Office retail would be a light pinkish reddish color. It's not that darker right there to the east. The blue on the map is public, and the green is parks, and then I think you know the railroad is there to the south. The existing comprehensive plan policy is in the comprehensive plan. I just excerpted that to show you in the staff report as well as on the screen, so if you care to, you would have the ability to look that up. And that first one was for the residential, and this is for the proposed retail office category. I have a summary slide here of that to compare them side by side. The photographs on the bottom left- The photographs on the bottom left show, to the left, the low-density residential is intended for a single-family detached residential. Typical homes would be in a subdivision or along streets like those pictures showed. And generally, it's not adjacent to incompatible uses and are in proximity to single-family residential land uses. So it's intended to be a neighborhood of single-family types of residential land uses. The picture on the right is a commercial strip center, which is more characteristic of retail office development. And the comprehensive plan narrative speaks to that. Examples are shopping centers, neighborhood retail specialty shops. And this can serve as a buffer between various residential uses and higher-intensity non-residential uses. However, in this particular location, there's no opportunity for it to serve as a buffer. Also, the retail office is associated with major road corridors, such as the Highway 377 and other major intersections. The streets at this location are not high-level or high-serving major road corridors. And in relation to major road corridors, this type of use, retail office, would be located where there's significant daily traffic volumes. That's not the case for this site. In the administration of the future land use plan, there was a section in the staff report out of the comprehensive plan. It states what kind of considerations should be made to review proposals to amend the future land use plan. Just a series of questions that are in that document. And basically, it says, what will the impact be on the community where the site is located? And to these questions, when staff reviewed it and created our report, we didn't find that we could support a finding of value of these questions. The comprehensive plan has a chart here with the little blue boxes. The upper level is the lowest intensity residential designation in the comprehensive plan, and the bottom is industrial. So the existing is up at the top, which is the lowest intensity, and the proposed land use category is somewhere in the middle. So two categories away is where the proposed lies. And so on to the rezon request. Again, I won't go over this in detail. I've already explained the site location and how it's located in a residential neighborhood block. The street view and the photos, the future land use plan map, your low-density residential there, comprehensive plan policy. On the existing R 8.4 zoning and use, the existing site is a site which has been granted an SUP with a bed and breakfast hosted or a short-term rental hosted now. There is no term limit on that. It is a seven-guest suite, and it has nine parking spaces. As existing, since it has no term limit, it may continue to operate in good standing and with that annual permit that we have every year. There's a permit. The R 8.4 also allows other uses, so if they decided not to have the bed and breakfast hosted use, they could convert that to a single-family residence. There are other uses that are allowed, such as home occupations, group homes, public use of schools, and uses with an SUP, such as professional offices, professional studios, and churches as some of the examples. And this is a longer list of the proposed zoning district, the LC, light commercial zoning uses. There are buy-right uses on the left and SUP uses on the right. First, the buy-right uses, or the permitted, you might hear us say they're permitted uses more commonly, would be their desired goal, the applicant's desired goal is the short-term rental, commercial, unhosed with a maximum of seven bedrooms. Other uses that could be in place, I'll just call out a few that seem to be a little bit more intense uses. Restaurants, including drive-in types, micro-distillery and brew pub, those are buy-right. A health club, let's see, and the commercial bakery and confectionery. Those uses might introduce large swaths of parking areas in that residential neighborhood as well as various hours of activity not common to a neighborhood like this one. And the SUP uses, specific use permit uses, animal processing, feed store, taxidermy shops, gas pumps with a convenience store, car service, self-service car wash are also uses that could be introduced. So that's a range of uses that are important to be considered in deciding a zone change like this. The impact of the zone change, characteristics of the permitted use in SUP uses can be incompatible, increased traffic, have outdoor types of storage in certain, certain situations, not always in light commercial, can you do that? Fields of parking, noise, operational hours not typical of neighborhoods. The site would become non-compliant in regards to its existing parking. In residential districts, you can't, you can't back out onto that street, and those parking spaces there are existing with backing out onto the street. So that part would be non-compliant. And also, if approved to change the zoning, the site would need to be improved to development standards for the light commercial district, which, based on our review, includes a 10% landscaping. That probably could be achieved. The site already has a residential setting, so much of the property is already grass and trees and landscaping. On the public notice side of this, on February 3rd, staff mailed out 16 notification letters, and we also published in the Hood County News as required, and we have received no letters in favor nor in opposition to the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the future land use plan amendment on February 13th voted by a 4-1 vote to deny the future land use plan amendment. And in regard to this change in zoning, on February 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of the request by a 4-1 vote. And your staff recommendations regarding the future land use plan amendment, staff is recommending denial. We don't find that generally the retail office designation is suited and situated for this site. There's not a major roadway, there's not traffic, it's a residential neighborhood. Regarding the change in zoning, staff also recommends denial of the request as presented. The key reason for this is that it's, the request appears to constitute what's called spot zoning. State law, by state law, the spot zoning is illegal and could not be approved. It's generally defined as a zoning on a property that's incompatible with the surrounding area's zoning and comprehensive plan. So with the existing comprehensive planning and the surrounding zoning, this proposal is not compatible. It's also typically characterized where it is at the face of the term, spot zoning. It's a spot of one type of zoning in the midst of some other zoning. The requested zoning is not harmonious and adaptable to building structures and uses abutting the property and other property in the vicinity of the premise under consideration. Additionally, the property is, the building is designated a historic landmark, which is suitable to continue the site's residential zone rather than change to a commercial district, which could disrupt the continuation of that cultural place. And so I want to also note that the companion case to amend the future land use plan, if the council acts to deny that amendment, then the zoning request would need to be denied as well. Thank you. If you have a question, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public meeting. I have a request to speak from Mr. Lenny Shores. Mr. Shores, if you'd come, give us your address, please.
Good evening. Thank you. I live at 616 Thorpe Springs Road, which is the Iron Horse Inn, representing Juland Properties. So my wife, and me and my wife Julie own the property. I appreciate you letting me speak to you tonight. I'll be honest, it was a pretty bleak outlook from what was just presented. Bumping up a, you know, a neighborhood against a bank and strip mall, that's not the purpose of the request. We're not planning on tearing it down and putting an auto shop. We're not trying to put tattoo parlors in. We're simply trying to preserve the Iron Horse Inn. That's what we want to do. We've owned it, June will be four years. Due to some, some family issues, I lost my father a couple of years ago during COVID. I'm trying to get back up to Oklahoma to help my mother out on a ranch that she has. We wanted to go to someone that's going to take care of it. We've had investors come in, look at it. Problem is, an unhosed, a hosted bed and breakfast has gone to the wayside. Nobody wants to run a hosted bed and breakfast anymore. I've brought this up in meetings before, when they were redoing the planning and zoning ordinances. That's one thing I'd asked about, is maybe changing those ordinances to allow unhosed up to seven. Actually, I've got an eighth room, to be honest with you. I've talked to some members about that before as well. And I'm blocked everywhere I've turned, I've been blocked. Like I said, we're not trying to put in, I've had investors come in, nobody's talked about doing anything outlandish. Most of them have wanted to do a bed and breakfast, they just don't want to live inside the inn and have someone run it for them, unhosed. And that's basically, you know, I'm not sure what else to say. We've tried a few times with, when the new ordinances were being done with going unhosed, I still, no, I can't do that because I'm residential, so I have no point, no way, no choice but to go commercial. And I disagree, kind of disagree with, so yes, this did put up the future land use. Currently, the Iron Horse Inn is residential, I agree. It's at the end of the corner. There's actually quite a bit of traffic that goes down Thorpe Springs, if you ever set out there someday, and it's actually fast traffic. People go flying through there. I'm budded against heavy commercial, which is city property right across the street. That empty lot is heavy commercial. The far end of the street, there's a donut shop and other items. It's all heavy commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, comments, questions of staff? Mr. Rodriguez?
Kara, can you give me some understanding, unhosed, commercial, and residential? What makes them different again?
So the difference between them are the hosted versus unhosed, being that some, the owner or some operator lives in the property, the building alongside the guests. The unhosed, there is no owner or property manager on site. The other difference is that the hosted can have seven bedrooms, unhosed up to three bedrooms. And then characteristics of the site would be additional parking for the hosted type and unhosed having fewer parking typically, because you wouldn't need that much parking based on the number of guests and residential there.
So hosted is seven?
Hosted is seven.
Unhosed is maximum three?
Three.
Okay. And did we change that from the last, I know we went through an amendment of bed and breakfasts and short-term rentals. Was that changed? Because I know it was separated, commercial and residential. Was that changed during that process?
Right.
Do you know, Michael?
I don't remember offhand. Kara, was that?
Yeah, I'm looking for the hosted one?
Or the?
So the, the number of bedrooms was the same previously?
For both? Or just, or what you just told me?
Sure. For the hosted, they were seven bedrooms, and they remained seven bedrooms. And I think you were asking what happened to the unhosed?
Yeah.
With the number of bedrooms, correct? It was three, and it did not change its standard?
It did not change. All right. Michael, I know it's not part of this, this agenda, but I would like to have the staff contact me about that part and go over the numbers again and see if we can't go over it and see if we can't modify those or come to an agreement of changing the number of bedrooms of unhosed and hosted. I know it doesn't relate to this, and it's not part of that as far as our voting options, but I still want that to be something that we follow up on.
Are you requesting to consider going from three in an unhosed to seven?
No, I'm considering unhosed going from seven to no more. And that's something that we'll have to talk about, what number we want to go beyond that.
Mayor?
I don't want to say nothing here for that.
I'm sorry. Point of order. We probably should talk about this at another time.
I agree with the point of order. Mr. Corrigan?
No, I mean, my, my question was along the same lines, but we can move on.
I just probably need to stay focused. I do have some comments. I actually watched the P&amp;Z meeting, and I watched what the applicant was discussing, and I understand your plight. I absolutely do. We put the future land use map into place as a roadmap and guidelines, and Kara's already mentioned, state law, there are a couple of things we can't do, like spot zoning. And I think that you're absolutely earnest in your belief that you are not going to do anything with that property if the zoning changes. It's not you I'm worried about, and I think one of the P&amp;Z members had the same issue. This, this property's been turned over more than once, and so if somebody else comes in and purchases it and decides to do something different, and now it's zoned differently, then it's now a different situation. And also, the biggest words in here were, the new use will be incompatible. And when we gauge whether we change the future land use map, that's kind of what we go by. You know, if it's, if it makes sense, because it fits in with what's already in there. And I understand your argument about heavy commercial being in that area, but right now, this is what the map looks like, and if we change it, we could be causing a domino effect in some other areas as well.
Mr. Shores?
So I can kind of see that point, although every time I've turned around, I've tried coming to meetings, I've tried asking about help for, the biggest problem with all of it is the fact that I have to stay hosted, for me, and, and some of the people coming in. I've, I've gone to meetings, I've put my inputs in, not a single thing. I'm not from Granbury, I don't have tons of money, but you have, there are places outside of historic district that operate, they still operate. I was told, we were told at planning and zoning months ago, there's no such thing as grandfathering, but I'm told those places are going to be grandfathered. You've got, they're light commercial, they're running as bed and breakfasts. So, but yet, I'm incompatible, everywhere I turn, there's considerations that have been made. You're buying up entire neighborhoods behind by one owner and turning that entire neighborhood into a short-term rental neighborhood. I'm asking for a single property to be able to do something with. Otherwise, yes, it has turned over hands. If it comes down to it, my family comes first, I can close up the doors and let it rot. I don't want to do that. I'm trying to find a solution to keep the Iron Horse Inn, Cogdell House, relevant in this community. I don't know which way to turn, because I get no every time I turn.
Thank you. Kara, could I, could you throw up the map again that shows the heavy commercial?
Not this one, the zoning?
Just, I just want to point, I just want to see where exactly the heavy commercial is in relationship to the property, if we have an overhead on that. commercial is in relationship to the property, if we have an overhead on that.
I don't seem to have it in this presentation. Yeah. It's in the report that you have.
It's the actual zoning.
I, I understand, it says, it's in the agenda. I don't see it in the report at this time, so. I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Wildly, go ahead and speak.
Because most of my comments are about that particular page. When you talk about spot zoning, would a street between two sides, like if it's the same on both sides, would that make it spot zoning or not spot zoning? Because directly across the street is heavy commercial and except for a small strip of land that the city owns, a piece of grass next to a parking lot, it's next to heavy commercials, commercial, heavy commercial across the street and basically adjacent to it, except for that little strip of grass that the city owns.
Understood. The spot zoning is regardless to streets and property lines, it's, it's where the, the zoning boundary stops and starts, where those colors change that line?
I understand, but again, with the page I'm looking at and you're familiar with it, directly across the street is heavy commercial. And so if his instead of light commercial was heavy commercial, it would look like it belongs because right across the street is heavy commercial, right beside it, again, except for a strip of grass that's not very wide, is heavy commercial.
I understand your perspective.
You know, I watched, I watched P and Z also and, and, uh, and heard the presentation and they're not talking about putting in a strip center or something, they just want to make it a bed and breakfast. I, I, I thought about this when I was watching all this. I stayed at a hosted bed and breakfast probably 20 years ago. I, I don't remember where it was, I remember it was a place in Colorado, it was kind of cool, we had a great breakfast the next morning and everything. You don't see hosted bed and breakfast hardly ever anymore. And he has a piece of property that to live there, they're in, like in an apartment, and if they need to move to find somewhere else to take a property like that and say, I'm going to buy this big house, I'm going to live in a small apartment in the back of it and make breakfast every day for folks and, and can't do anything else with it. They didn't, we didn't talk about all the, the options here, but one was maybe being able to host dinner parties. They can't do any other, if you, you can't eat there, I understand, if you can't spend the night there, is that correct? Or if you don't spend the night there?
With a hosted, um, short-term rental, you can serve, uh, food to your, your guests.
But they have to spend the night there in order to do that.
Right.
So, I've been in that house numerous times for events and they have a dining room table in there that seats 14 people, which, which would be a nice dinner party for a group on a night when they don't have guests there, or if they did have guests that were upstairs, they're unable to host anything. Um, th- this was in P and Z, they can't, they can't sell anything out of there, they can't sell canned jelly or salsa or something like that if they wanted to. And, and it seems like, you know, we're really tying someone's hands here. I don't see much difference between this place and something like Hotel Lucy, and I'm not saying anything positive or negative about that, but that's unhoseded and that, it's like a hotel because it's zoned like commercial and I don't think anyone's concerned about them tearing down hotel, excuse me, Hotel Lucy and putting in a strip center. And, and I kind of hear Trish's perspective too, that, you know, we don't know what would happen in the future, but I can't imagine someone tearing down the Cogdill House to put in another type of business. And, and when you showed what the different businesses are there, three of the things that they could do there were listed. One is a, a larger unhoseded bed and breakfast, one is some kind of commercial, a restaurant or whatever. That place would make a fantastic place for a small restaurant. So, anyway, I, I don't know what else to say, that's my point.
Kara, can you go back to the uses again?
Kara, did you need to respond?
Yeah, I, I would like to remind the, um, council that a, um, hosted bed and breakfast can have receptions, retreats, teas, luncheons, um, and in this, our eight-four district, and limited to no more than 50 guests, um, that is also a possibility.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, can you go to the list of uses?
While he's looking that over, a quick question. There were letters sent to all of the neighbors within X and there were no responses or no negative responses?
Right, within 200 feet and there were no responses of any type?
There were no responses and that would have touched how many? Three people, 10?
It was, I thought it was 18, but someone, I think, said 16. We had 16, yes. Sorry, I missed.
No negative responses?
No.
So Kara, how, how do you define, I mean, who makes that determination that this is spot zoning?
Sure, that's a, a legal consideration set by the state legislatures.
Okay, so when you read it, who puts that definition onto this property? Who makes that determination?
So, so staff, staff would review the, any type of application to look to see the character of the area and the zoning in the area and look at the zoning map to see, is, is there any other like zoning there? If not, then it's a spot, it's, it's based on the face of the term.
But there is like zoning there. I mean, heavy commercial is heavy commercial.
No, but there's a different zoning district we're talking about is the light commercial district. The heavy commercial district is a different zoning district.
I, I understand that, but usually you kind of, you have those intermixed everywhere we go in our cities. You always have residential buttoned up to light commercial.
You, you may find that where the general plan, um, is located along a commercial corridor, there may be a recommendation for light commercial against to, um, heavy commercial, through the, the, the future land use plan map designations.
So, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Wildly, you had some, you had some good questions or you had some comments that you want to make?
Yeah, again, on the, the sheet you don't have, this piece is heavy commercial, it's across the street from this piece, so why is that not spot zoning? Because it's not touching anything else that's heavy commercial.
Well, it's, it's joined at the center of the street, the districts go to the center of the streets.
I'm sorry?
The districts go to the center of the street.
Of course, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. Corrigan?
I'm just, to clarify, what you're saying is that if the request was for heavy commercial, spot zoning would not be the issue? It's only because that property does not abut to light commercial?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Reiner? Mr. Ross?
I was just going to add, and I know council knows this, this is staff's, staff's interpretation with legal, looking at it with our legal counsel and reading the statutes that the state puts on cities, and in our opinion, this request would constitute spot zoning. Council has the discretion, of course, to vote however you choose, but this is what staff's interpretation and recommendation is.
I don't consider this spot zoning. I mean, you, you see light commercial bleed into heavy commercial, or let me start over, you see heavy commercial bleed into light commercial and then residential. That's basically how you see Highway 377. You'll have light commercial on the, on the front edge and then right behind the front edge, uh, those, those light commercial is residential. So, and, and who's, who's to tell what the, what the use of, of these other heavy commercial, uh, zoning plots are going to be in the future? They could end up being light commercial as well.
Let me ask, uh, council to, uh, counsel.
Please. Just comment, the comments you were giving me.
Well, I was just saying, like I said, you can, uh, you can take up this vote here that's in front of you, stick into just the issue at hand here. Spot zoning is not an option in this situation. It doesn't conform with the master use plan, but, and what you were talking about, Eddie, you could, you know, put that on an agenda for a different meeting, but we can't speak except for what we have on the agenda here and vote on what we have on the agenda here. Or if y'all want to take it up in executive session, you can do that as well.
Thank you, we could, yes, we could also table.
Can, can we go into executive session because there's a, that issue I would like to get clarified if we can't discuss it openly?
And, and question, what's our timeline on this? I know he's trying to get this done so he can sell the property, but is there, are we working off of a timeline at, on any point?
The, the only timeline is the hearings and, and whatever your decision would be either to take action tonight or to, to continue to another date.
One of the options presented to us is to continue the item to the next public hearing if more information is needed. We, I, we, we're still in a public session, so no, no motions yet.
Yeah, Mayor, can I ask a, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Mr. Shores?
Lenny. Um, can I ask questions to Mr. Lenny, Mayor? Uh, Lenny, do, do you have a current contract with anybody to sell this property?
I do not because everybody left. I'm, I was trying to get this pushed through so I could, I could try and I, I had a few people that had some ideas such as wine tastings or, or having some dinner experiences and such, but since it was residential, right now, everybody's walked away. I was supposed to have another client come in last weekend, um, they haven't come in yet, but, uh, so no, I do not currently, everybody's walked away. I even, I, I don't want to be argumentative, I had, but I did have one client walk away because they did call the city and they were told that they could not even do weddings of any kind on that property. That was, that was close to being a $1.5 million deal. They called the city, the city told them they could not have any weddings, events on that property whatsoever. They turned around and walked away and I can't get them back.
Okay, uh, my next question is, I, I know that you're using it as a bed and breakfast. To me, I'm just trying to understand, I'm just going to be as, I, I don't know any other way to say it, is you're, you're going above and beyond for somebody that you don't know that could potentially buy this property for some other use that you have no control over.
That, that is true, um, but I've, I've got to be able to do, right now, I'm not going to be able to sell the property. I, I'm, I am not going to be able to sell the property being a hosted. I was trying to get some people back to the table because they wanted commercial and so I'm like, all right, fine, we'll, we'll try and, and get this flipped to, to where it could be commercial and, and they would have a little more leeway. Like I said, nobody's talked about doing anything outrageous. They wanted to expand the business a little bit, um, with, like I said, some dinner parties, there's been talk about maybe having some wine tastings, um, but even, I mentioned a while ago about, uh, selling things. One thing I do on the weekend is I make homemade salsa. My guests beg me to can my salsa and sell it to them. Can't do it. I can't do any of that.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you have more questions from Mr. Shores?
Uh, no, no, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Do we have other people that want to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
So Kara, I guess my only question is, when you look at Hotel Lucy, how many rooms are at Lucy? Six, seven rooms, something like that? And it's unhoseded, correct? Right?
That's correct.
Okay, so what they're looking for is, is basically to have the same kind of Hotel Lucy at, let me finish, at, at that location. The difference is just fundamentally, Hotel Lucy is like commercial because it runs along Business 377 and there's a zone residential because it sits in our, on the corner there in that residential district, as Bruce pointed out, surrounded by other property that's zoned something differently. In this case, it's, it's heavy commercial. I'm, I guess, a little surprised that it has been as successful as it has been. It's a beautiful home, I learned a little history tonight about it, but a little surprised that it's as successful as it is, you know, given what it's surrounded by. You know, usually short-term rentals are successful, you know, given the property and location and where they're at and what's around them, so, um, so I think that's it.
Question?
Is it tough? This is tough.
Can I just?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I misspoke, it's like commercial, therefore it's a commercial, uh, short-term rental. So that's not a hosted nor a unhoseded type, it's just a, a commercial type?
Okay, we have, uh, some opportunity to close the, uh, public meeting if we're through here.
Mayor, I just want a clarification from Kara. You said, so in order for him to be a commercial bed and breakfast, he has to be zoned in light commercial, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and if it's hosted, he has to live inside the house, not on the, on the compound or the, within the parameters of the, he can't have another?
He needs to live within the house itself, not in an accessory building or on another property.
Okay, and you currently live at the, at the house?
Yes, sir, we do. When we have guests, we, we do live in the house because I have a son and three dogs.
Okay.
What used to be a short-term rental right next door, 235, um, we use that as, as well, but yes, we do stay in, we, we have to stay in the, we have an extra room, the eighth room that I was hoping to open someday, uh, that's the room we stay in.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing and Kara, would you go over the voting options for us again?
Sure, so on the screen before you, the voting options for the future land use map amendment is to approve as presented, continue to the next public hearing if more information is needed or to deny the request. The voting options for the zone change is to approve if the FLUP is approved. If, second is to continue, the item to the next public hearing if the, uh, land use plan map amendment is continued and/or if more information is needed. And then the third option is to deny the request.
Okay. Mr. Wildly?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2325 as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Uh, second.
2325 as presented is to approve a request to amend the future land use map contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan of Block 80 of the Barton addition from low-density residential to retail office property is addressed to 616 Thorpe Spring Road. That's the motion?
Yes, sir.
And it's been seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We have a chance for further discussion?
Quickly. Yes, quickly.
Okay, so if this fails, we have the opportunity to bring it back for a different vote? Just want to clarify our options. Or if it fails, it fails and we move on.
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Yes, this, if this motion or vote fails, you can entertain a second, what is my understanding? You're correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know there's a, a motion on the table, would it be possible to go to executive session?
There's a, there's a motion on the table.
I know, I just clarified that, but I wondered if we could suspend the, the rules and go into executive session?
You can't suspend the rules when there's a motion on the table.
Correct. So we have a motion? Call for vote. All in favor of approving 7.4 as written, ordinance number 23.225, say aye? All opposed, say nay? All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Aye. Nay. Aye. 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 Nay. Nay. 3-3. Fails. Now we can go to executive session. Okay. I now declare that the Grandberry City Council convened into open session. All members are present. City Council go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained the following sections. Number one is consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Two is deliberation regarding real property. And three is deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we're going to executive session at this time. I now declare that the Grandberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. So we have voted on 7.4. It was 3 and 3, which is a loss. It was not approved. So Karen, would you go over our voting options on number 7.5 again, please?
Okay, so that's the zone change at the bottom of the screen. Your voting options are, since the, the FLUP was denied, the zone change would not be aligned with the comprehensive plan, and the option would be to deny the request.
So with no approval on the 7.4, our option is to deny 7.5.
Correct.
Correct. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez, deny, makes a motion that we deny 7.5?
Second.
Mr. Gorgon's seconds. All, 7.5, have we completed our public session on this one?
Yes.
Okay, we did 7.4 and 7.5 with the public meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, got it. Okay. Okay, we have a motion. It has been seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6 and 0. Okay. Number 7.6, consider rejecting all bids and authorize rebidding of the main wastewater lift station improvements. Mr. Ross?
I'd like to introduce Rick Crownover, our Assistant City Manager. Thank you, Rick. Or is it Chester? I'm sorry. Chester Nolan instead. I'm sorry, Chester.
Rick Crownover, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to turn this over to our engineer, Chris Hay with EHT. He did the bid and he's got the results for us.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the, the bid results for the man lift station project. We did receive three bids. The apparent low bidder ended up withdrawing their bid within 24 hours of the, of the bid opening, which according to the bid documents is allowed. So they were thrown out. The bid tab is attached to your packet. That leaves the apparent low bidder at $3,381,427. That is significantly over budget from what was budgeted for the project. After meeting with city staff, the recommendation was to remove some scope from the project and rebid it to try to get the project closer back to the available funds for the project. So that's what our letter of summary of the bid result states. And in short, the situation that we're currently in. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions beyond that or talk about anything further relating to the project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
Just a quick question. You know, if you look at the quote, the 3381 change number and the 2663 change, which is, which was the budget, which is basically the, the award that we had, it's a difference of about $717,000. So when you look at the screening, which is the change in scope, the bids range somewhere between 780 all the way to 937. So is it kind of fair to assume that by changing that, we'll be more in line? Or, and I guess two other questions on that is, is, is that the screening something we would do later or decided it's not necessary?
So talking with the operators on that, the, the screening, there is no screening capabilities currently at the lift station. That's something that they had desired to have in front of the lift station.
Okay.
Just for operation, operational purposes. With what we would do, we would not expect to recover all of that bid item back because we will have to do something in place to divert flow.
Okay.
It'll be significantly less than the screening structure. And we'd expect to receive some of that money back to bring it closer to the budget. However, you never really know what happened.
Sure.
What's going to happen when you rebid the project. Sometimes you get surprised and sometimes they don't lower their bids much at all. So it's, we're kind of at the whim of the market, but it is something that, removing that scope is a significant amount of, of scope that we would expect to see a reduction.
You expect the company that called at the last minute and said, you know, don't accept their bid? Because I, I did see they, they acknowledged they missed some things. You expect them to come back and bid as well as everybody else?
They, they are no longer allowed to bid.
Okay.
Based on their withdrawal of their previous, previous bid.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Chris, what was the difference? Do you know?
The difference between?
Like, the, what was the expectation? Obviously, you had a number in mind.
Yeah, so the, the estimate that was done in the planning stages was around 2.3, 2.4 million dollars for construction. So we're, it's a little over the, the, the mid, middle bid that you see, the one that, the lowest bid, the lowest bid that wasn't withdraw, withdrawn, was a little over 40% higher than, than what the estimate was. So.
And was it, because I'm only seeing the, in the bids now I get, but was it due to the, the rise in, in cost of materials?
Yeah, there's a few, there's a few contributing factors, and that's the main one. We're fighting, and engineers on the capital projects are fighting the same problem with price, price increases across the board. That's a common theme. With this specific project, we also did encounter a utility conflict in design that caused us to relocate the improvements to a different part of the site than where we originally planned for the estimate, which did increase, did end up resulting in a cost increase probably for the project as far as site work goes. So there's a few factors throughout the design that changed from what we expected in the estimate that contributed, but the main factor was just price and cost escalation for materials.
So was there a percentage of your expectation, okay, we started at 2.3, we should expect an increase of 30% or something like that of a new rebid?
Yeah, it's, you mean from when we rebid or from the estimate to the bid?
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it was reasonable in the market today that, to see a 30% increase in cost.
Okay.
Based on materials and especially electrical materials, which this consisted of a lot of. So that did play a significant factor in the, in the bid results.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Ross?
And just to piggyback that, part of the problem, and I think Chris would agree, and we all are seeing, is all those federal COVID funds that flowed to all the cities and counties all around the nation and the state, these contractors are busy and they just jack their prices up. And, and unfortunately, that's what's happening to sewer plants like ours and lift stations and everything. And we're not alone. It's, it's happening all over the state.
Yes, I, I definitely agree with that. And with the project this size, I would, we were certainly hoping for more than three bidders on the project, but that's what we received. So in the process of rebidding, we will continue to push every avenue that we have to get as much participation as we can and hopefully get some, some people in here to give competitive numbers.
Are you limiting the bidding within a, a geographical area or mileage? Or is just, doesn't matter, right?
No, it's, it doesn't matter where, where the contractor's from. They're available to bid on it from wherever.
Okay.
Okay. The understanding I have is that this screen takes out limbs, trash, et cetera, before it gets to the, to the main wastewater station. Okay? So what's the risk? We don't spend a million dollars. We get a limb halfway down into the wastewater treatment plant. I know it's got a screen in front of it, but what's the risk?
The risk is damage of the pumps. A lot of the debris, it's more so rags and wipes and other hygiene items that get into the, the wet well. And they can clog pumps, and that's really the risk. They won't get past the pumps. It'll damage the pump and/or keep the pump from working, which requires an operator to go out and either remove the pump and, and remove the clog or replace the pump eventually. So, but that, the pumps have been operating there without, without a screen in front of them for a while, and operators just remove it manu, remove those items manually as best they can.
So how many citizens, if this thing goes down, how many citizens are going to be affected and for how long?
Well, there are three pumps. There's not just one pump in the wet well. So there's redundancy there. One is a true redundant pump. So we design it for two to operate and have one extra, and they rotate as they go. So you have multiple pumps there to, to make up for if one does go down. But this, off the top of my head, this lift station probably serves pretty close to half of, of your system right now, is what I'd guess.
Okay. So continues to clog. We continue to fix the pumps. How many pumps do we have to fix to spend a million dollars?
I'd have to look at these pumps, but I would expect, off the top of my head, that one pump may be $100,000 in this situation. But that's if you had to replace it brand new.
Right.
A lot of times you can repair them for significantly less than replacement cost.
Yeah. I just don't want to be, you know, penny wise and pound foolish here. Okay? Counsel? Okay. Do I hear a motion on this? Consider rejecting all bids and authorize rebidding?
So moved.
And let me finish. I'm sorry. The rebidding would not include the screen. That's what you're taking out of the bidding. Okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Riner, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. Passes 6 and 0. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Okay, we're going to move to number eight. Citizens' comments. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes for a combined total of 30 minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda. The city council will be allowed to receive input or information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into discussions. We've concluded our, our deliberation agenda and the items that were on that. So now we're at this business point. I have one person that has signed up, Mr. Dave Eagle. Go on once. Fade, you want to take his turn? No? Okay, go on twice. There is no one signed up. Mr. Gorgon, you mentioned that we might need an executive session. Where stand you? New executive session? No one needs an executive session? I declare us adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate you coming.